Yeah, well, I have two other stories. I cannot stay very long. So hopefully we can get started. Hey Kathy, how are you? Hey Jason.
Hey.
Soon as. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Well.
Another trailer.
Yeah, it's not too bad. Welcome. You could've got some of the banjos, that'd be great.
Let's work on that. Just because I don't like looking at that trailer.
It's great for the park. It really is, of course. No, apparently it's really messed up right now because the ground is buggy around it. So it needs to be... I think sprinkling would make it look better.
It's like on the side.
Is that right? There's only a couple of site plans left. We have site plans left.
Did you get my email?
Yes, I did.
Sorry. I'm happy to, if you know, if you want to give us the... They want to give us your... In fact, we just met with the T N R S today. Hey Tom, how's it going on? Matthew, what's up? How are you?
Oh, yeah? We have less than most people, I don't think.
No.
No, we don't?
No, you guys have them. You have two now. And I think that matches Smokey. And those have been since the seventies, so...
Those were there when I was...
Exactly. Why do you think of here?
Yeah.
It's always good to ask.
Yeah.
Can arm wrestle?
Yeah. Or you sit...
You're like...
I haven't seen this. Did you look at this? When did this... This didn't come out at all, right?
I'm happy to see you guys.
Good man. Thought I saw you this morning on Water Street, but it was someone else. I even waved.
Are you guys up for election this morning? Yeah, I should know that my house or Fazella's.
Yeah, Fazella's.
James, I guess. James with you guys, right?
No, we're all the same except for Fazella.
I'm trying to decide whether to run again.
You can't decide.
I'm too busy right now.
Too busy running city council?
Yeah. How does she do that?
What's up, man? Look, man, I really need a hole in my head.
Bigger than it already is.
Put your full-time job.
Yeah, do that, yeah. I don't know, is it true that, um... That, um, Amy Lawford is going to run against Royce Reeves?
Well, I have no comment.
Are you aware of that?
I have no comment.
Madam Chair, how are you?
How are you? Good to see you guys.
Yep. I'm gonna sit next to you, actually.
Oh, good.
Chris, how are you?
Might have to move it.
Huh? Oh, you'll ditch me? Well, I can move now, just let me know.
Yes. Long before I was on board, yes.
So is that a mis-speak or an intentional diss?
Oh, I've been doing that since I was thirty-five, so I don't really know what my excuse is.
I love you two, I really.
I love her now.
I love you, I do. You should know it. It's all in jest.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's good, well, you know.
I know.
Yeah, right. You have, and I vote.
Yes.
I believe it. I can't imagine why you'd be so good.
As mean as ever? No, she's good. She, uh... She spent most of the last week in Abu Dhabi, where... And then, yeah, and then she got back for a day before she turned around and went to Phoenix.
And I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Mike Murphy, our interim city manager. We have two councilors that will be, um, that are delayed, so they'll be joining us a little later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Walker, members of council. This evening is our last chance to touch base with you all before two really significant dates. The first is the date, February eleventh, by which we would need to advertise some increases on the revenue side. And secondly, March fourth, which is the date which the city manager and superintendent of schools will be in front of you all at your first March council meeting to present their budgets. So, uh, we, tonight, will walk through with you how we've moved forward with budget development, where we are on revenue and expenditures, what we've done to manage the gap that was in front of us, and to get your feedback as we go into the final stages of preparing the manager's office's budget. We'll be starting with Ms. Beauregard, and actually, I guess each of us will have some role in going through some of the slides with you tonight, so...
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I'll go pretty quickly through my slides, since a lot of this you had seen before in our last work session. So, when we met on, um, in January, uh, we had a long discussion about the strategic plan and about the priority setting for fiscal year twenty, and these are the five areas. They're basically the same areas as fiscal year nineteen, the only addition is that we have preparedness after safety and security. And so we'll continue to focus on those areas as we finalize the budget, and then we'll be working on some additional reports out to you in all of those areas, based on the feedback that you provided on that report, which was very helpful, so thank you again for that. So, again, these are the five areas that'll be the focus, and as we write the budget document, we'll make sure that we highlight each of these areas accordingly as well. So when we did meet on January eleventh, this, these are the numbers at the time, so if you were to go back in time, you would have seen, this is what you would have seen. So preliminary revenue estimates was an inc... They were increasing by approximately six million dollars. Some major expenditure considerations that were in the budget. Capital budget and debt service were increasing by just over two point six million. At that time, we had just the school, the formula, which is forty percent of new real estate and personal property tax revenue, which was going to the schools as an increase of two point two million dollars. And under employee compensation, we had several items in here, including an employee COLA of two point two seven million, police adjustments of nine hundred and eighty thousand, and living wage bringing it up to fifteen dollars an hour to ninety-five thousand dollars. Remember, we also showed you that there were, there were five million in department new requests. Many of those were for positions. We don't have that slide here, but I just wanted to remind you that that's what we were handling at the time. So, the next several slides that I'll let Mr. Murphy walk you through is kind of how we've gotten from that point to today.
Okay. So, you'll see here at the heading of the slide that we start, actually, we started with a gap a little bit more than this, but we'll show you for the purposes tonight, a gap over seven million dollars. And, um, we first add to that, not subtract, that there was some additional money that would need to be spent if we were to realize the cost of living increases that we had talked about, and the living wage implementation. Part of the cost of that, as it had originally been talked with you in previous work sessions, was as though it would all happen on July one. There is some efficiency and cost savings, frankly, about staggering the implementation, and so this budget proposes a split of two point one seven percent on July one for the wage increase in living wage and the remaining two percent on January first. The police salary adjustments, uh, this is really just the realization of a change that we had projected originally would happen entirely in fiscal year twenty, and was gonna be a little over a million dollars. As it turns out, because of the careful analysis of the year that we're in, and I believe I messaged you all about this yesterday, I'm prepared to enact the four point eight three percent increase for our sworn staff in the police department, starting in the month of February. I believe we have budgeted for a enactment date of that of February twenty-third. So, this is just to say, hey, when you give an increase in FY nineteen, you still gotta pay that in FY twenty, and that's what this five eighteen represents. Juvenile court operations, there's a need for additional sheriff's office personnel for the bailiff costs. And then we get into, uh, Ms. Beauregard talked about that we had five point one million dollars, um, projected in new requests, four point three million of it being positions that departments had asked for. And we looked carefully through those, and you see some additional positions here. Some of them, in order to, you know, phase them in and save some dollars, have dates that are not July one. Some of them are from the beginning, and so I would just summarize those, you can see what they are there. A centralized safety coordinator for risk management, a safety and security manager, which is really, um, out of our Committee on Safety and Emergency Procedures, which is a citywide initiative, it's just we're saying that police is the appropriate place to house it. The support services manager, which you all have heard about multiple times, based on the NOVAC efficiency study, this is a layer in between Ms. Creasy and what she has now, which is a huge number of direct reports. Transit, uh, the conversion of an additional four relief drivers to FTEs. We've talked about, I think, in the past, the idea that, you know, previously, there was only, what, two-thirds or so of the schedule that you could account for with full-time drivers, and then counting on relief and part-time folks for the rest, and we're trying to get that ratio much higher. And then finally, a change that may happen even in this year, we've been looking at this. You're aware that Mr. Vandiver's staff has offered some additional services in our front lobby, like passport service. There are some localities that offer something called DMV Select, where you can avoid that very busy DMV out there on Pantops and maybe process some of those transactions in City Hall. And we've been exploring that and looking to move forward with that. I think, Jason, feel free to chime in, but we are, what, the second busiest workload for DMV in the state out of that Pantops location? It is certainly a local need. I had the great pleasure of renewing my license and sitting there for four, uh, four hours in October, um, so I know it's a real thing. So, um, that's, that's, uh, some additions that you make to that seven million that we show at the top, right? And then we talk about, maybe there are some things that we might spend less on. And in that vein, you know that we had two point two million dollars programmed in for the schools already. And we had a joint work session with the board and superintendent last week. They had made a request for three point eight six eight, as I recall, and this is us trying to get as close as we can, recognizing what our gap is, it's splitting the difference. It's about three point one million dollars in new money to the schools for next year. There's some additional, um, savings really for us in general insurance and workers' comp, healthcare, um, you know, we've got some changes in our pension liability, and then finally, this stormwater transfer, right? So we, we, we add up to eight point five, then we subtract out the three point five, so then we're still at five million dollars. Yes, ma'am?
My question was specifically with the schools, because the last time we went through this, we didn't have their number. So we should have that as an addition of a big number, that maybe a decrease of some... Yes, and this is where, this is, I apologize, it's in the seven million gap. So we added it in at the full amount, at three point eight, and we should have shown that on the expense side. And then, so it is really a three point one. What's in the budget right now, as this is presented, is three point one million dollars. So it is above the two point two, but it doesn't quite get them all the way to the three point eight.
I just got worried that we are...
No, no, you're, I noticed that immediately, and so you're abs... Yeah, I just want, I was gonna clarify that, and then you asked the question.
Right, I think I started by saying, there's some work that precedes this in the intervening period, be great if we capture all that, we could certainly do that after the fact. I think we started over nine million dollars for tonight, we're talking about seven million on down. If we go to the next slide. We had originally budgeted what we thought was kind of conservative two percent growth in the revenue sharing. And then I got a, uh, email or a text message from the county executive, say, hey, um, we need to talk. Turns out that we're gonna get a million and a half dollars less than we did in the year we're in. And, uh, this is, um, been run multiple times now by staff, and the, you'll remember that this formula lags a couple years behind, and, uh, you know, prior to two of you being on council, but I'm sure you remember that there was a massive realignment in commercial real estate assessments a couple years ago. And because of that, now we're ending up with less revenue via the formula. So, instead of gaining three hundred and twenty thousand, which we had hoped for when we last talked to you, that puts us in the negative another one point eight million dollars. Human services, you're aware, there's been a fund balance there for some time. I talked with you about it for many years, and I'm sure Ms. Dimmick has and will continue to, um, understand that that is a enterprise fund, and really operates as such, meaning that, you know, they are paying their expenses and waiting somewhere in the sixty to ninety day range to recoup through their billing process, their fees. And about ninety-two percent of that money is not general fund money from the city, so they really operate like a business. And that fund has grown and shrunk over the years due to changes and acquisitions, programming, but a year or so ago, we talked about, what size should this be, and what would be a good standard? And when we look at, out in the nonprofit sector and businesses, we always are looking for, you know, do these folks have three to six months of cash on hand? You know, and how can we measure their stability against that? And so this transfer is to recognize that, you know, the fund balance is a little over two million dollars right now. They really need to have cash on hand closer to one five one six, and so we're gonna transfer this in as a one-time revenue to the general fund for FY twenty only. And of course, that would be dictated in future years by the size of the projected operational budget, and should they have any, um, uh, surplus in any given year, really it's about whether they exceed the targets in their fees and in the services they provide. Chief Baxter has proposed a fee that's always been permitted by code, it's just that the city has not charged it, and that's an inspection fee by the fire marshal's office when they look at plans and look at safety in buildings. That's a potential revenue for us. Real estate tax and DMV Select, which we talked about as a expense on the other page, is also a revenue source for us over here. And what we're going to do with that program is start by turning a half-time person who's currently with us into a full-time person, and then see what the volume of demand is. Most localities that have done this have experienced quite a lot of demand, we'll see how it works with us. So, um, that was still a big gap for us to be figuring out, nearly six million dollars, and there's still many ways to get there.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
About the retirement pension back on the previous page.
Yeah.
Is that, how does that impact, um, employees?
Uh, that, duh, I mean, I'm gonna be very happy to turn that over to Ms. Hamel, but as I understand it, that's really about, we're trying to achieve a certain amount of our funded status. Should we pay for that all at one time or amortize it over time? We would like to be able to pay that all at once. Right now, we're projecting that we're gonna amortize it because of the size of the gap, and what we would ask the council to do is, should there be money available at year end, when we get to December, that you think about, as you have in past year ends, transferring the difference into the retirement fund, so that we're not basically paying this amount for twenty years? Day-to-day, regular employees, right now, there is no impact by this number.
So, in other words, that could go down if we decide to... What is the benefit of discussing, though, the year ends or...
The decision is, do you pay all upfront, which would be a wonderful practice if you had the cash on hand, or would you essentially pay a little bit more, like you do when you have a loan, and pay that over a twenty-year period of time?
We do have a little bit in the budget for this. Hundred and eighty thousand, but if we were to cover the whole thing, it would be one point nine million.
Okay.
So that's, so that's the difference at year end, is that one point seven?
Kinda like when you buy a house or a car or something like that. If you could pay cash, it'd be cheaper for you, right? So it'd be one point nine seven million if we could pay it all upfront. Or, if we pay over twenty years and only pay a hundred and eighty thousand, then you could do the math, that's three point six million total cost. Okay. So, we get to this next page, you see that we had a change in expenditures and revenues, and we still need six million dollars. So, we have a request out to departments, we're looking at agencies, and this is, you know, we say, oh, well, your budget is almost a hundred and ninety million dollars, why wouldn't a three percent, which is what we ask people to go look at, cut or change, generate closer to six million dollars? That's because the general fund, the department part of the general fund, is only eighty-four, eighty-five million dollars, so it's only three percent of that, along with about two hundred thousand dollars from agencies. And then, uh, being still at three point two million dollars, and having never heard a member of council contemplate out loud a real estate tax increase, although we certainly are open to your feedback tonight, the only other revenues out there, short of us making more cuts, would be the potential for both meals and lodging, which would generate three point two million dollars. And that would bring us, right now, to a balanced budget. So, obviously, there's a lot of work that we do in between now and approval of the budget in April. This is one way to get there, and a potential, um, manager's budget for March.
How, when you're requesting the department cuts, and it's a flat three percent, I'm just trying to understand kind of the strategy there. How does that align with things that we know, the services that we know are just absolutely vital to the community versus, I'm just trying to understand how the prioritization goes with that, because for me, a flat across the board, every department has to go look at the same number, whistles me a bit.
Yeah.
And the requests that the departments, you know, that came in from the department, so what's happening on that end also?
Uh, we've looked at those requests. There was another page where we recommended some percentage of those, what was forty-three million, or four point three million dollars in new positions. And it's just a matter of prioritization and affordability.
But we're not asking them to, they had additional requests, so we're not fulfilling all of those, and then we're, we're not asking them to cut.
We're asking to cut deeper than that, because the new requests aren't part of the gap.
No, I understand that, but if they had needs, and then we're asking for a deeper cut, what, what are the departments saying about, about that request coming from us?
Well, I would say that, you know, that's a mixture of responses, right? We haven't decided or determined yet what it is we could take, what can be taken with no service impact, or with some service impact that is tolerable. I would point out that there's never been a budget in the history of the city where departments didn't ask for more, so, um, you know, that's not probably ever gonna happen. So, I mean, I wouldn't say that the five point one million dollars in new requests, other than it's a bigger number than it's ever been before, is anything to gauge about, you know, whether we can or can't make cuts. I would say that there were other ways to approach the gap, you know, there are things that we could do with personnel, there, you know, you could institute freezes, which are not always strategic. I would point out that at any given time, you know, we have, what, fifty to seventy vacancies on the rolls, and you could eliminate those. That wouldn't be very strategic either. The department heads are the experts on their line of service and their budgets, and if anybody is equipped to say where a modest three percent cut can come from, it's them. Will they all need to be part of the equation? I can't answer that yet, but that's where we need to start. In the past, you know, uh, I've been responsible for budgets where we were asked, show us your five percent cut, show us your ten percent cut. It was three in recognition of the fact that, you know, we need to look at a place from a, a, a less significant cut, a number that maybe can be managed without significant personnel impacts, and go from there. It may be that when we bring you the balanced budget on March fourth, that's not where the money comes from, but for right now, um, for today, January thirty-first only, we have a big gap to close, and I would point out that a lot of the decisions that we've been made, making and talking about in the CIP, require massive amounts of cash in FY nineteen. So, if we wanna talk about taking cash off the table from the CIP, that can change the picture for the gap, too.
So, you're, you were saying that we were, we are cash funding our debt, and if we, if we float more bonds, this would change the, I'm not sure what you mean by that?
No, I would say that, uh, if we look at the, um, CIP...
Right.
Then you'll see, on the cash side of the CIP alone, right, we've got one, five, four, four, three, so you're, what, eight point nine, another, I mean, there's ten million dollars in cash funded just in FY nineteen. So, I mean, that's another way to resolve the budget gap, too, but it's been my understanding that all that affordable housing spending in FY nineteen was a priority for the council.
Right.
So, that has an impact on the cash that's available then on the operating side.
I guess what I'm asking is if any of that could be turned into a bondable item, in which case we're reducing the cash, increasing an operating expense, expense by increasing debt service?
From our perspective, having talked about that in detail with bond council, I would say that there is the possibility that based on, you know, a, a, a plan that was further advanced, that perhaps the housing authority's side could be on the bonded side instead of the cash. could be on the bonded side instead of the cash side. It is absolutely clear that it will not be acceptable to bond Friendship Court. And so, whatever support a nonprofit provider, whether it's them or somebody else gets, needs to come out of the cash side. And there's additional, what, 1.4 million in the Affordable Housing Fund currently. It is earmarked in the manager's proposal to the Planning Commission. 900,000 for vouchers, 500,000 for rehab. That's also on that cash side, too, as the CAF always has been.
Can I say something about department reductions? Because I know Vice Mayor Hill and Mayor Walker, you haven't really been through this exercise before with departments. But we've done this, we didn't really do this last year, if I recall. But in the past, I mean, Mr. Murphy's exactly right. We ask departments to submit these. It's 3% of their budget, so the dollar amount does vary. It's not just a flat dollar amount, but it is some percentage of their budget. And then, it may not be, not every department is touched in the end. I mean, these are nuanced and massaged over the time that we're trying to get the budget balanced, and we're having discussions with departments. So, and sometimes what they submit changes as we have discussions with them. And so, we do talk about, you know, you had some concerns, and we do talk about that. And that's why we've tried really hard to kind of keep away from really direct services as best we can. And so, we'll try to do that again, obviously. I mean, but we're still trying to, we're working with a large number that we haven't yet determined how we're gonna identify. We've, you know, we're starting, we've got some ideas. But there's a lot of discussions that happens with departments back and forth during this time as we finalize all of this. So, I didn't want you to think it's happening in a vacuum, just sitting in the budget office, just us doing it.
No, I think it was more just getting the point of like, if you ask, I could see if you ask for like 1%, 3%, 5% and ranges, and you kind of can see. And I'm just trying to understand, because to me, like, a department is not apples to apples in cases, in terms of when we look at our strategic plan and what essential services we need to be delivering. And so, I just want to make sure that we're going through that lens.
Well, we have to get them to submit something, and so, this is, we consider this a starting point. It may not be that Department X has three. They might have more, because they agree to that. Or they're, that's what has decided. And because, and they have various reasons for that, that will justify to you when the budget is presented in March. Or somebody might have no reductions, because the only thing they can give up is a position or whatever that might be, because they're a small department. And so, we do recognize that as we have these discussions. But we have to have the departments do this exercise to explore this. But there's a lot of discussion that happens during that time.
I do have another question. Does any of this include covering expenses for the schools reconfiguration that we discussed last week? It's on the next page, okay. So, I just wanted to know, that's...
So, I could...
And we don't need to launch into that, because the next one is that, you know, I do want to see what a real estate tax increase would look like. I can't remember what a 1 cent, 1%.
About 800,000 or so.
It's 800,000. And then, I also want to know how much the recent assessment increase has essentially... What's that equivalent in terms of a tax increase? Can you do that computation where we would know that, and I read in the paper that there was like a...
But we've had those numbers. It's about 800,000.
So, so that the...
The new assessment at $500 million in new value generates X.
So, what is that, an equivalent in terms of a tax increase?
The rollback calculation?
That's what she's, yeah.
I don't have that yet.
That, just in the future, that would be good to know.
No, we will have that soon, though. That's what we're, that's what, our deadline is coming up, so we will have that. Excuse me.
That's a question I have.
Yeah, we'll be doing that calculation next, so. So, Ms. Galvin, you asked about the schools, and these items are not included in the numbers you just saw. So, as of right now, there's still a $786,000 request that's unfilled. So, the schools requested 3.8. What you just saw in the budget, we built in 3.1. So, this is the gap that remains for the schools, based on their original request. And then, we do not have anything in the CIP right now of the $3 million for planning and design. And we don't have anything in the future in terms of $55 million for complete construction. So, those items are not in the budget right now.
So, did you all check on the conversation we had during the meeting about the presentation that we received about the potential to bond through?
Sure, so that's next.
That'll be the next page.
So, again, this is not a source of funding. This is just a different method of borrowing. Ms. Hamel, I'll speak to this, and then Ms. Hamel, you pipe in anytime if you have questions. So, the benefits of using this are usually for counties, because they don't have to have, they don't have to do a referendum to borrow using these funds. Cities and counties that have a lower credit rating can have, can get cheaper findings. But we're AAA, so we, this really, our way of doing it really is cheaper for us. And these are also for cities, counties, who don't issue debt very frequently, and we do every year. So, let me go to the next slide. So, if we, if we were to do this, it would just be like any other debt. It would not be anything different, except it would be more expensive, obviously, as I just talked about. And so, again, the highest rating they have, I think, is like a double A plus for their, for their bonds. So, again, this is just another method. It's not a source. Our AAA gives us a bigger advantage, so this offers no advantage to us. So, if we're gonna go the route of the 55 million, it's gonna be the same way that we've been doing it, which is just a general obligation bond.
And so, did we explore that?
Explore what? The general obligation bond?
We're working on that on the CIP side. Why it's not here is you have to realize, I mean, we proposed a CIP, which has been vetted by the Planning Commission. It went through the Planning Commission with a recommendation to adopt it with the added $1 million to the Affordable Housing Fund, in which, again, just talking about our gap, be another cash-funded item. And so, we could certainly provide that information to council. We had imagined that the CIP and about what stays in, goes, all that is a negotiation that will happen in those March meetings that are directly targeted at talking about nothing but the CIP. We can prepare ahead of time what the impact of another $3 million on the bonded side would do with the ratios, so that you could know what you might need to cut, if anything, on the bonded side. And I think that's our next step, to have scenarios for you. But I was thinking that that is March 14th, right?
But that needs to include more than just the 3 million. It needs to include their timeline, too, right?
For the 55 million?
Yeah.
Right, because the 3 million, once you go down that path, you're going down the path of the reconfiguration plan. So, I guess what, I'm agreeing with Mayor Walker that we'll need a longer spreadsheet to look at how we're gonna pay for that reconfiguration plan across time.
That, yes, certainly. We could look at some projections about where we would be outside of the five-year plan that you have always endorsed, a long-term plan. And I can only say that if you want any of that $55 million in the first five years of the plan, then that means digging into the plan that has already been proposed and having some trade-offs about things that are currently proposed not being any longer.
And I think that's what we're seeing.
Yep.
Well, not think.
Well, we know if we're gonna go down that road, with the very minimum, we need the 3 million, because they need that pre-development money.
That has always been understood by staff since the meeting, that will be projected.
Is that something you thought about cash funding? Or was that a bondable item?
We can bond that.
We're hoping not to cash.
Yeah, that's just adds to the deficit you just saw. We can look at how we would bond that, so. Just quickly, in terms of other expenditures not included, we talked about the new requests. So, the way, there are a few new requests in the budget as it stands now, but there's 4.9 that are not included. Also, in the capital budget, there are no additional funds for the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund as the Planning Commission had recommended of $1 million a year, and the Elliott Avenue Streetscape is at 1.2 million. So, those items right now are not in the capital budget. And as Mr. Murphy suggested, these could be items that we discuss when we start actually debating the CIP in more depth in March after the budget is presented.
And just for the sake of my colleagues and everyone here, I did look up the Elliott Avenue in the Streets That Work Study/Plan that was adopted in 2016. And that is a, that is a top 10, if not one of the most important corridors to fix based on our community feedback and data. So, it doesn't, it just doesn't get smart-scale funding. It's not a big enough project for that.
That was gonna be my next question, why isn't it eligible for smart-scale funding? Because I was hoping we'd be able to tap into that, but it's not a big enough project.
That seems to be the case. I don't think, I mean, I guess it could be, but it never does get submitted as a smart-scale fund project.
And I don't know if now is the time, Mr. Murphy or Ms. Pogar, but maybe even later, I would love to hear from Mr. Acufunda in regards to even, or is it possible for us to tack the Elliott Street, excuse me, Elliott Avenue Streetscape onto another project, to propose it?
Well, I think what we have to do with these is wait until we get...
Wait, I was just making a point of information.
Yeah, no, I was talking, so, yes, I agree. Yeah, yeah, essentially, just, thank you, Vice Mayor Hill, just looking for other funding sources for Elliott Avenue. That's a whole lot to say in like one thing.
But when we get to the capital, I would like to just see where we aren't funding these top priorities, so we have the whole picture, and the public can see the whole picture. And also, just, and I think we've talked about it before, making it really clear when we've maxed out our bonding capacity. What does that number look like?
But then, our bonding capacity goes up if we raise taxes.
Right.
I mean, that's the thing.
How does that work?
So, on the capital side, I just want to be clear that as we're moving forward, what are the types of things that council wants the scenarios for? And what I heard is the $3 million for the planning part of the schools, the Elliott Avenue Streetscape, on the cash side, the Affordable Housing Fund increase, and both within and outside of the five-year plan, the $55 million for the schools. Did I miss anything?
And I think this is a conversation that we'll have to make sure that we're clear about as a council. But if we're talking about making this a major investment in affordable housing and, you know, schools, and if they're, while the Elliott Avenue Streetscape, and there have been a lot of citizens that have been advocating for it, that may be something that we have to put on hold with some other things on the CIP. I mean, I don't know until we get that list, but those are the, you know, type of trade-offs that we might have to, have to make. And hopefully, the community would understand the importance of, you know, those two major things that we're trying to, that we're trying to accomplish.
I'm just saying that, and that's a point well-taken. These are safety issues. And I guess I've, I've lived through moments when we've delayed street improvements and children were hit by cars. And so, I don't want to, I don't want to underestimate the importance of these things either. And I...
And that's kind of the conversation we had earlier, whether the potential of something or...
Right.
And the perceived risk of safety or whether things are actually happening, which I think are, you know, and I live in this area, so I don't, I mean, that's something that you all can give us in terms of... I know what people would like to do on Elliott, but is that, is it a major safety risk? Or is it just something that's been on the list that we, that people definitely prefer?
So, are we far enough removed from kind of the study and presentation of the Streetscape? The council needs a refresher on it in order to best evaluate that? I'm just trying to figure out, how will you have the information about whether this becomes a priority or not? Do you already feel like you have enough, or do you need something else from staff?
I'm hearing that we just need to see the back information that justified and gave rise to this Elliott Avenue being a high-priority corridor in the Streets That Work Plan. And there was, those streets and those intersections were identified based on things like crash data, based on desires, high volumes of people living nearby that were walking. So, that, that's the kind of information, I think, that would be beneficial to the council who haven't, didn't live through that process like I did.
Yeah, so if it's a 2016 report, if we, you can just send that out, that may just be the first step.
I wouldn't mind knowing since 2016, how many new housing units have gone into that area, given the growth, if that's easy.
I see Mr. Acufuna's pen is moving, so I assume he's taking note of that.
So, the CIP also has out in future years, a lot of dollars, as we talked about, from just the redevelopment dollars. And so, we'll be looking at that holistically, and we'll have even more, newer information, better information. I just, I guess we all want to see everything, so that we can start to kind of parse through what's gonna be feasible when.
Right, and just remember that, yes, that is certainly true. Getting you to balance for 2020, remember that the cash dollars that are programmed in there drive, you know, the amount of cash that will need to be available when that comes. But you have all the unknowns about what your revenues and expenditures are going to be. What is concerning right now is to balance 2020 and how much cash is just in that first column. I understand that, you know, there is a bigger number for, you know, Friendship Court than the 5.9. There's another, you know, four and a half million later. There's a bigger number for the Housing Authority, 12 million more in cash, other than that 3. But in order to figure out balancing this budget, you know, it's just the cash in that column.
Okay.
So, I think maybe our discussion maybe should start with whether we, the proposed tax increases?
That would be helpful.
And what precisely do we have to be advertising by February 11?
That is the real estate tax, the rollback. Okay, so that's just for the real estate, but any other tax increases are seven days before a public hearing.
Oh, okay, so we don't, we don't have to settle on a rate right now?
On a real estate rate?
Right.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, we do.
And that's what needs to be advertised on February 11th?
Correct. Yes. We don't have another time to meet, so, yeah, on real estate, we've got a little, a tight timeframe, because we have the third day.
And then, you don't have to enact it.
That is correct. You can advertise at a higher rate, but have a budget at a lower rate. But if you advertise at the lower rate, you can't go up.
But we don't know the comparable that this recent assessment has as a comparable, like, to a tax increase. I'm at the question, we don't have that number.
We, we can get that to you. I mean, if that would be helpful.
It would.
Because it's effectively, it's not us making the decision, but it's the market making the decision, and that's what people are feeling. And so, I just want to know what they're feeling.
Do you all have the charts for the meals and lodging tax, based on other localities?
And you used to also have the charts on the real estate taxes, either.
We've done that, yeah, we've shown that comparison, and we are a lot lower than the cities.
I've got all this, through the adopted FY '19 rates, I've got all of that information that I can...
Do you want to just talk through what the charts, what they say, I mean, where we would land?
Sure, sure.
Can you slide it up here, or not?
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
I think, you know, on the lodging side, we could probably start there, Ryan. You know, we had talked about in the previous meeting that, you know, oh, this'll jump the city to third or fourth on the chart. But then, Dr. Bellamy made the observation, as I recall, that I think there's, what, 11 or 12 people who are clustered at that rate that we would be moving at, right? So...
I think we'd still be in the middle.
Yeah. I think numbers four through about 16 are all at that new percentage that we're talking about as a potential change.
And I know I've asked this before about the lodging tax, but of that, $816,969 that's generated by a 1% increase, it's like 30% of the first 30% goes to the tourists? it's like 30% of the first 30% goes to the tourist?
That's not until we realize the actual.
Okay.
So it's not based on the budget number, so that formula lags a year. So, right, so, right, so while they would receive, so the benefit, it's really just based on the first 5% as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's small, pretty much.
Unless you were to change that it was 30% of a larger percent than five, or, you know, as Mr. Healy has talked about, that the number should be greater than 30% of that first five. Unless you change those numbers, it really isn't gonna radically shift it. We're definitely seeing some screens I didn't imagine we would see today.
Is this pulling it up as a dual monitor, as opposed to just giving it a presentation, so I can slide it over here?
I was gonna say, you can duplicate the screen if you want, but, never mind, you got it.
Okay, so, the first one we have is the lodging tax, and, sorry, I have to reduce it so we can see more. So as you can see, right now Charlottesville is at 7%. And if we were to go up 1%, that would put us at the 8% rate tied with approximately, or even with approximately 16 other, 15 other localities, at 8% right behind those top three you see on, on the list. Now, that's assuming none of them have any increases this year as well. So that's, that. And meals, with meals tax, we initially start off a little bit lower where down, excuse me, at tied, tied at 32 with three other localities. And if we were to go to the 6% rate, that would put us in, in the, the middle at about, tied at number 19 with various localities, as you can see.
Or tied for 26.
Or tied for 26, either way you wanted to, it would put us in the, in the middle third of...
How far is that, let's go?
Uh, it's, sorry, I believe it is between 36, 38, I have not... So, yeah, 38.
So, I have a, a question, just hypothetical. Or not hypothetical, I guess it's, well, you ask the question. When we increased the meals tax 1 cent, this was 2012?
Uh, that was 2015.
15, excuse me. When we increased it in 2015, we saw how much revenue come in from the receipts? Or would you have to look that up, get back to us?
I mean, we're calculating, you know, 2.3 million, but, you know, in fact, more meals got bought still, and so it was realizing more than that, as I, I mean,
Right.
the tax guy is shaking his head at me, so I think I'm in good shape with that explanation.
That's more or less the question that I was looking at, is even with the increase, the 1 cent increase, more meals were still being bought?
That's correct.
And even in the early budgetary documents you all showed us in previous meetings, we have seen a steady increase in terms of revenue and sales on the mall, or, in the city as a whole?
Are you saying sales on meals?
Yes, sir.
I think that that's true, yeah, yeah, generally true.
Because I thought that was what we saw at the, at the retreat, that's what, this last, we saw at the retreat. So we, people are coming, the real estate, I mean, excuse me, the meals tax from before didn't have a negative impact.
People did not stop eating out, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But look at some of these, I mean, we definitely, what, I, I remember the people coming and being very upset. And it was just because of the increase. Did they say they thought it would impact, or were they...
Yeah, they thought people would stop coming.
They thought it was gonna impact their, their customer base. And they also expressed very clearly that they felt it was unfair that their sector was being targeted. To bear, to bear the burden of additional rev, you know, expenses and, and, and that, that is, was a very big piece of it as well.
I think they articulated one additional argument, which is, you know, if somebody was paying more on their bill, that perhaps they would tip their servers less who need those tips.
That's true.
You know, I think that our data on what the actual experience was, based on the revenues, that's not how it ended up playing out. And if you just look at our peers out there in the world, people do pay more, a lot more, as an add-on on their restaurant bill than they do here.
I just wanted to point out, when we did enact that meals tax change, we also committed to coming back at year-end and looking at, making sure that the actual receipts did not decline, and that we would consider sunsetting that, that particular increase if we did see that, and we looked at that for two years in a row, I believe it was, and did not see that, so.
My understanding from previous presentations is that the counties max out at a certain level. Is this one of the categories where they can, there's, there's a limit to how much they can go?
I think they could choose to go to referendum to...
Right, but in terms of what the board can do, and what levels are they at?
They're at four, I think.
Four for meals, and what for lodging?
I'm not sure what they're at.
They're at five for lodging.
They're at five.
And I'm just curious, are there ways we can be creative and say, you know what? If we're gonna pursue this path, we're gonna allocate a portion of this, and we're gonna reinvest in that sector in a way that, whether it's through marketing or other ways, just to show that, you know, we're doing this, and we don't think it's gonna have the impact maybe that you do, but to, to support you, we're gonna, we're gonna reinvest in, in your sector, in the restaurant and lodging sector. And obviously, it's a very different amount, it's not gonna clearly equate to this, but even like a percentage of this, just to kind of send that signal of support. I'm just curious if that's something that's possible.
But if they're not being negatively impacted, based on previous data? I mean, I know this is uncomfortable conversation, but if, so if we do the same kind of process that happened before, where if we explored in 12 months, 24 months, and if there's a negative impact, then there isn't a discussion to commit to decreasing it, that's very different from designating funds in attempt to, you know, create additional revenue, and when they may not need it. I mean, it may be a better sale, I get what you're, you know, why you're suggesting this, but...
Trying to partner.
But I think the community overall, even when we're talking about the property tax increase, we know that there are definitely certain members of the population who can maybe pay that increase, whereas we all have to have conversations with, like Todd, about like how to make sure that people who may not can pay, you know, and be impacting negatively by the increase. But that doesn't mean that we keep it low, when it could be potential beneficial for some of these major... And then we need to talk about, you know, the community overall, how we benefit overall by having, you know, making this investment into the school division, making this investment into affordable housing, and the fact that it hasn't been done. So if it had been done previously and maintained, then we wouldn't have to make these major commitments. So at some time, we're gonna have to, you know, make the commitment. And we can't...
And I'm not, yeah, I'm not stepping away from making those commitments. I'm just, I'm thinking about, you know, for $75,000, which obviously got a lot of heat, we were able to just, you know, partner with the downtown area and do some promotional things, that's a relatively small number. I'm just saying, are there just smaller things that we can do to help just, you know, bolster and, and provide marketing support in some ways, the city, and partner with them? And it's not just the downtown area, there's, there's other commercial districts. I'm just trying to say that, you know, for...
Sure, it's an offsetting expenditure, of course. But if council is willing to entertain these, right? I mean, these are just for today, they aren't part of the proposed budget from the manager until March 4th, if they were to be in there. But if you would entertain these increases, then Mr. Engel and other folks would actually make outreach to folks in those sector and talk about what that might look like, per your request.
Mr. Engel looks really excited about this.
So what if we...
I think he's excited.
And can we see the real estate tax too? Where, how we compare?
So, this first one shows where we are in relation to the other Virginia First cities. And this shows since 2004, the increases and decreases across these various localities, and how much that they've gone up and changed in that time. And then the other one is if you look at just FY19 adopted rates, where we were statewide. And that shows us at 95 cents down here at, I can't see that number.
31.
31, out of the, again, the 38 cities. 41 cities, because there was a couple that don't have lodging.
So, I mean, even when we look at this number, like, we're below Stanton, Franklin, I mean...
The cost of living there is different.
It's also very different, I, oh, I agree.
And our assessments are different.
Our assessments are different.
That's what I was getting, sorry, assessments.
Still.
So on there, who are we most closely aligned? I mean, is that, are we looking at like, Allen?
This is why we did the Virginia First Cities comparison, because this was a group that we had joined many years ago that had cities that were comparable in...
Oh, my God, I don't know why I keep doing that.
Leslie might be, be able to speak more to the Virginia First City, but they were comparable in certain demog, in certain demographics, not, obviously not across all, because you'll see there's varying sizes to these cities throughout, but age, fiscal stress, certain char, population characteristics that I'm not 100% sure of at this time. But that's why we, why they had this, this group as a comparison to be, not necessarily always apples to apples, you can, I don't think you can ever do that with it, with all cities, but a closer grouping.
Yeah, I, I find, and I thought this the last couple of years, these, I would much rather see us just against all Virginia cities. It would be more work, but this is not representative, it's a very strange group of Virginia cities. Doesn't have Williamsburg, or Alexandria, lots, lots of other, it's, it's an odd, and whatever makes up the First Cities group doesn't, I, I don't, I don't get it in this, in this...
I think it's something to do with how old they are, but I think, but the Northern Virginia cities, you know, we're, we're comparable in terms of inflating land value on some level, is closer to Northern Virginia than we are to, you know, the Richmond area. And certainly, we're not the Valley. The Valley is very low cost of living relative to this area.
So I don't know if this helps at all, but I looked up the rollback from last year, and the total assessments increased by excluding additional assessments due to new construction or improvements to property by 4.68%, and the tax rate would have been point, basically 91 cents. So, 4 cent difference in that case. So, we, again, we haven't, this was last year. So, we haven't calculated this yet, we could do it quickly though, to figure out...
Is it comparable this year, like a similar trend?
Um, I'd have to look at the numbers, I could probably figure it out just by looking at the numbers real quick, so, let's see.
I just think the market's doing more than its fair share of increasing things here.
I mean, it is doing a good job about giving us revenue, for sure.
But people feel that too.
Oh, I, I know, but people want schools, and they want affordable housing, and they want streets that work, and they want a lot of things. So at some point, we can't, because again, I, I've seen this, we've talked about these things for six years. And at some point, we have to make a commitment.
I agree with you, Ms. Gallo. And it's gonna be tough, but I mean, at some point, we are going to, as you just stated, gonna have to make a commitment if we're gonna address all of these needs that people are saying that they desperately want right now.
So, I think it is a little bit higher, it looks like it's, so if you were to look at the 4.68 number, I believe the new number is 6.2. And again, that doesn't include new construction or improvements to property, because the rollbacks add as very specific as to what it's asking to include in that calculation. And that's where you calculate the rollback from, so...
I think a good follow-up item, you know, on any of these things, right? So that you can put them into perspective, is for us to calculate that number, and then give you a couple of examples at some different price points, so that you understand somebody who lives currently in a $200,000, $400,000, $600,000 house, what the change in the tax bill is just because of the tax, and what the change in the tax bill would be if we were to, you know, offer any, you know, additional cents on that per 100. And I think it's also instructive when you, you know, do that on something like meals or lodging too. So we'll, we'll create those charts fairly quickly and circulate them to you, so that, I mean, I think when you realize, well, somebody stopped and got a soda, and instead of 110, they're gonna pay 111, right? Or they got a slice of pizza, and they're gonna pay, you know, 333 instead of 330. I mean, you know, and you can calculate that up, somebody went out to a more expensive meal. The, the increases that we're talking about on that 1%, they're not quite as significant as sometimes they're portrayed to be, so...
So, can we see the chart for the meal and lodging again?
This is the, this is the meals tax one?
And when was the last time the lodging tax was increased?
Last year. It was two years ago?
Yeah.
And the meals tax was raised three years ago.
And the lodging tax was 1%? So I'd be interested in definitely exploring those two, I don't know. And for the lodging tax, is a percentage in the hat, 1.5% increase? Is that, would that be too drastic, based on? So we don't know if these have increased.
Well, these, these were what was adopted as of FY19. A lot of these localities, they have slightly differing budget timelines and cycles, but they're probably, they're going through a lot of the same things we are right now, so some may consider this. We just don't know at this point.
In the last, in the budget retreat, we had, I mean, it was the last one or the one before that, that had the packet on the statistics about 2018 versus 17, that had the increases in all categories, right? It had, it had lodging revenue had gone up, sales tax, revenue, meals tax, so that, the, and that, that contradicted the impression that I had, at least through CBB, which is that there had been this 3% decline. And it actually showed that, I mean, it was like kind of really striking that the economic fundamentals were, were quite strong, year on year. So it looked as if the hotel revenue was steadily increasing despite everything, which was, which was despite 2017. Correct?
Absolutely true, and if I get it wrong, Mr. Engel's gonna correct me, I hope. But, you know, the, that decrease that continues to be talked about by folks from that industry, and Mr. Healy, is RevPAR, which is this calculation about when a room does get rented, what's that average calculation about what it gets rented for, right? It's a little more complicated than that, but needless to say, it's a little bit down, right? But because we have more and more rooms coming online, and they continue to be rented, the actual revenues continue to grow.
Right, and the per-unit cost is going down because the supply is going up. But overall, yeah, the revenue is just fine.
It's an economics lesson. I think all of these...
And what's the formula for the real estate tax again?
I do too, I mean... I do, too. I mean
They, they all need to be explored.
It's, what, ninety-five point nine cents for every hundred dollars in value?
No, and
Ninety-five.
Not point nine.
No.
I'm, I'm at the gas pump now. Ninety-five. There you go.
But the school system, what percentage of that?
Oh, so they, so yes, if you, they would receive forty percent of the new revenue. So, eighty, forty percent of even a thousand, which is an increase about, so.
Which is
And again
Part of how we arrived at the two-point-two, which has always been plugged in there, right? So, you know, if there was more revenue in real estate than there is in our projections right now, based on the assessments, the first forty percent would add to that two-point-two, and then, I mean, in theory, right, we're adding to that with other revenues beyond that.
Can we dedicate any increase to the reconfiguration, or it's up to the schools to do whatever?
Uh, when it's capital funding,
Right.
that's a little bit different. We do dedicate it to particular projects and purposes. The distinction is you, as the council, decide how much you're gonna give the schools in any given year for operations. They then decide how to spend it. On the operation side, it's not appropriate for the elected
Right.
governing body in the locality to say to the elected body for the schools how to spend something that is at the superintendent and the principals and all that's discretion.
But I, I guess, my question is, if we increase, let's say, real estate taxes to help take care of the fifty-five million dollar long-term plan, could the increase of those taxes be designated to the debt payments for that bonding? Can that be an agreement we make with the school?
Perhaps, but yes and no, because
Just the increase part of.
The first forty percent of it would have already gone to the schools for operations, so you're, and
Not if we write a resolution, though.
You start to, you start to whittle away what actually goes over.
We're trying to earmark it for debt service.
Yeah, but we could write a special, because I remember, like, we could write a resolution and specifically state that this income would go here.
But, but if I'm understanding that right, though, we're talking about capital improvements and we wanna make sure that the schools have the revenue they need, the resources they need to pay.
We're paying.
I know, but we're, but they're gonna be contracting with people to do it.
But there'll be our bonds and we pay the debt service.
So, so that's what
So, if you wanna dedicate a new tax increase to that, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I think that's what we're
And by the way, we're already over the formula, so again, as Mr. Murphy said, you're kind of determining what the school is getting. We've already gone past the formula, so you can say we're gonna put a hundred percent of the new real estate tax increase to capital if you want to. That's totally up to you.
Yes. It's a budget policy.
But we still have to be mindful of the fact that we got the list that we received this year. I know we're asking, just like we're asking our departments to look at potential cuts, hopefully, you know, not forcing, but look at. So, we're asking them essentially the same, the same thing.
If you don't give them the three-point eight.
The full, yes.
Right. Well, this budget right now already shows us short of that by eight hundred thousand.
That's correct.
Even with all the increases that are proposed.
Yes.
By the same token, we could say the same thing for housing authority redevelopment. That we are committing that part of that tax increase to be for debt service. But I think we do need to then make sure that we're very clear about that that redevelopment has to happen. And, and we put criteria, whatever, it, it's like you can't earmark it indefinitely. And that's why it's important to have the good master plans, the good site plans, all that stuff, so that we know exactly what we're investing in. And it's hard to do that right now without seeing those exact plans, and I'm talking about the schools right now. That's why the three million, to me, is a no-brainer. We've gotta do that so that they can get to that point. But, I mean, we've already seen the data, though, the, the growth projections and what they, what they are going through in terms of needs, and and that's been demonstrated to me, so I don't, I don't at all doubt the need to make these reconfiguration plans a reality, but earmarking the debt service, to me, seems to be something really contingent upon seeing a really clear plan.
Which we can't see until we give the
Until we give them the three million.
I would say the staff, the only hesitation, I'm sure staff has presented this in the past, we've said that, you know, there's only one pot of soup, right? And, you know, that earmark could make sense for what the change is in the year that you do it.
Right.
But there could be some change, you know, you've made that commitment that that's going forward forever. Maybe there is no new revenue in some year ahead and you've already committed that you have an earmark that presents some problems in balancing the budget down the road. So, we can't predict the future, but that's really
But unless it's a decrease, right, so if we have the eight hundred thousand dollars from a one percent increase, there's the, there's the money they would get now, like, the two-point-two, right? And then if there was consideration for more, but this new eight hundred thousand, whichever, whatever was earmarked out of that pool, that wouldn't decrease unless they, the taxes were decreased in the future, right?
You'd have to designate a flat amount, right, because you only get the increase once. So, when you do the tax increase, you get the eight hundred thousand next year, but then that becomes your base for the following year. So, you would have to designate, or designate an eight hundred thousand dollars of real estate revenue to maintain that over the years, because the tax increase only gives you the increase once.
But it gives it at the new rate, which is more than if it had stayed the same.
The basic increases.
Yeah.
Right.
But as I understand it, our, our overall fiscal picture is, improves when we increase more revenue, and then that changes our capacity to float bonds.
It does add to your capacity, and capacity is not necessarily the issue of affordability. Because right now, even with the CIPs that we've presented to you, we're looking at debt service that's increasing eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So, even in the current projection, we're going from a ten million dollar annual debt service to sixteen million dollars worth of debt service, just in what we're currently looking at. So, capacity is an issue and you are increasing capacity, but you also are bumping up to an affordability issue.
Because of our budget policies.
Well, because of your budget policies, but also because we have to pay back the debt.
And that's where raising taxes comes in.
Right.
To pay your debt.
But you're obligating future budgets, so when you get a tax, if you do a tax increase this year, you only get that increase one time.
Yeah, but it's a rate that happens every year.
Right, but it's on, right, but you only get, you have that one base. So, you're not getting new revenue. You're only getting new revenue on new value.
It's not new revenue, but it's still more revenue than what we had.
If your, if your assessments continue to rise, correct?
Like, for instance, the meals tax, we got a bump that year of two million dollars. The next year, we didn't get another bump of two million dollars. It, the base was higher, but the bump was not two million dollars a year going forward every single year, unless you raise the rate again. So, it's the same for any tax rate. I'm sorry, go ahead.
But she's just saying, like, if you're just gonna designate that, yeah, it's not anymore, but we're gonna, she's just asking to designate that amount
Sure.
more than just that first year, first, I mean, that's what I'm
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not even talking about the designating
Oh, in terms of capacity.
At this point, I'm just saying that that, but we're, we're, every time we raise a tax, it's like getting an assessment increase. We've increased our revenue, which then, we can then play with our expenditures and still keep a balanced budget, but then also then allows us to still stay within our budget policies to float more bonds. I just, I mean, I, because otherwise, you're saying we can never, ever go beyond floating a certain fixed number of bonds, and I don't think that's the case. If your revenue picture is increasing, you have the greater capacity to float more bonds and do more capital projects.
Right, but you have to pay that back.
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
But that's, the debt service is paid by the revenue, and the revenue either comes through assessment increases or it comes through taxes.
Yes.
Right? And that's all I'm saying, is that that seems to me, it just elevates our capacity.
So, it's something that'd be helpful to know, with these increases, what kind of capacity building does that give us? Like, how much more bond capacity do we have for various scenarios?
You know, and I'm also thinking of the spreadsheet that the Housing Advisory Committee gave us, the twenty-year spread of all the different investments that we'd need to make to meet our housing needs. It's translated into being like a ten million dollar capital investment over twenty years. Um, is that the same kind of a spreadsheet that we're gonna need to have for the schools? Twenty years, getting us to the point where we're doing the entire reconfiguration, is that another ten million dollars every year? In order to do that kind of investment, what is that revenue picture that we need that comes either through increased assessments or taxes or both?
But, but not twenty years, because based on their timeline.
Well, but each, but then, but each, but each year is gonna have an impact. But, but we, these projects aren't gonna be done in one year.
But I think this, for the schools, this is
But you mean the bonding and then the, the payoff schedule?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right, right.
Yes, I think that's what some of the tables that we've presented to you with the CIP before is, and that's what we currently have, is that we're showing you that you are able to increase your capacity and you're not bumping up to your, or you are bumping up to your nine or ten percent, but on the other side, you're, right now with what we have, you're increasing your debt payment from ten million to sixteen million dollars um, over that five years. So, your tax increase gives you new revenue one time. So, from ten, let's say the second year goes to twelve, if your tax increase gives you that revenue to pay that additional tax, you've still got increases you gotta pay the following year. Somehow, you gotta come up with money as well.
Can I ask?
I'm just, I'm, I'm just pondering.
Can I ask another question? This would, is it okay?
Mm-hmm.
This would go back to before I was on council. So, the last time there was a recession, I'm curious about just what, that, how the government processes that, when it happens, when you've taken, so if, if there were a recession in the next eighteen months or twenty-four months, which there's speculation there could be, or next year, how does, how does, what, what, how does that impact the fact that this year we would have taken on significant new commitments, based on what happened last time? I just haven't been through it before, so I'm curious how we, how this council would adjust next year or the year after that.
Well, that depends how much it impacts what our revenue sources are, right? And we would continue to make the mid-course adjustments on the expenditure side. In the previous downturn or recession, we didn't add some things. Nobody did out in the world. But we were lucky that we didn't lay anybody off either, and just a mile from here at the county office building, they made a lot of realignment and changed, you know, how they did business and dropped a lot of positions that, you know, now that we're not in a recession, they continue to add those positions back. So, without knowing the severity and whether it would impact, you know, those big tax drivers we talk about, you know, do the real estate taxes go down? You know, did meals go down? Did lodging go down? Business license, et cetera? I mean, till you know that, really, it wouldn't be possible to answer.
I just think for the schools, I think this is just the first phase of some, some more to come. I mean, this is just their realignment and we know that there's modernization that could come in the future. I just don't want us to be short-sighted in, in what the needs of our school system is gonna be. So, I'm, I certainly hear where Kathy, where Kathy, where you're coming from, in terms of we need to be making this investment and recognizing this is not a short-term thing and this is really, to me, just one phase of a much longer plan.
And, and, you know, relative to what Council Signor was saying, so I came on council in 2012. We were in a recession. We were coming out of it, and I remember there was no, we were not seeing any increases in, in revenue. We were still under the water in terms of property tax evaluations. And there were major cuts, severe cuts, and this, not as severe as the county, but major cuts. And so now we've been really doing well. The, there has been a positive to the urban Renaissance. We've got major investments and people wanna live here. And we have been not investing in a robust way beyond maintenance of our schools. We have not been modernizing them. And we are, we are on the cusp of seeing some major redevelopment plans, Friendship Court, Crescent Halls. They, there should be more for our public housing and our assisted housing and just public, assisted housing in general, that now we have the revenue and, and we have the stability, this is when we invest. I, I don't understand why we would not invest because we're afraid of another recession. Because then, of course, we definitely would invest. This is the time to do it. While it is, we're still strong, we still get great interests, rates on our bonds that we float, and we have major needs looming large in front of us. That, that's what I'm, I'm just seeing that, that I did live through a time when we definitely had no revenue. We didn't have the resources.
I'm just trying to be mindful, and
Oh, absolutely.
Because, because the thing about debt service payments is they're not negotiable. They can't change, so they're not discretionary. So, once you start taking those on in a very flush time, in a lean time, those are the first thing you can't let go, because then you lose your triple-A bond rating. And then that, that degrades the quality of lots of other things you can do. So, it's just another thing to think about when you're looking at a whole list of capital projects that are all debt-funded to take on at the same time. It's just a fiscal stewardship question to raise, and if it's, it's just something that I, you know, that we think about is what part of the budget going forward that we're, that future councils have to, have to have is mandatory.
Sure, but the bond rating is also impacted, and I vividly remember this coming from our consultant, impacted by the quality of your schools and the quality of your infrastructure. Those have direct bearing as well on your bond rating. So, it's not an either-or. It's all of it.
Right, I, yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, we're certainly gonna spend, I think, maybe as much or more time talking about CIP when we get to March, as has ever happened in this room. And I think it's very clear to staff from councils' discussions that there's been a high priority on affordable housing. And now we're talking about schools. And if those are the two biggest things, then you'll need to look at what else is on the list. I would say that a thing that is just as big as those is taking care of the infrastructure, right? So, you know, one of the things that we'll say, whether that's how it turns out or not, is like, we're never gonna propose to you a plan that doesn't say, keep paving the roads and building the sidewalks and taking care of ADA. I assume that there's no way that we're gonna abandon a plan to build the Belmont Bridge, right? And then there's some other things out there where you, you've made some decisions to accept some money or make some deals with the idea that you were gonna do things. Will, will you say that those things in the end are as big as affordable housing or the schools? That's where the rubber will really hit the road, right? I mean, there's a lot of local money out there in West Main, but it also leverages a lot of dollars. Dollars from the state, dollars from UVA. There's a ton of money out there in the combined obligation of the court and the parking garage. Seventeen million dollars. But we worked awful hard, even in this year, to keep those courts downtown, and it seemed to be a high priority. So, I mean, are there dollars out there? Sure. I mean, are there other dollars? We, we talk about bike pad and trail systems and the equity and all that involved with those things. There's still a lot of money out there and park acquisition and trails. Those are values at that time. How are they gonna match up when it comes time to talk about schools' affordable housing? All of these things are things that we have clearly heard from you were important at one time or another. This is gonna be the hardest year of prioritization, I think, that we've ever experienced.
I mean, I guess that, for me, the, you know, one of the ways that I wanna think about it is, I remember two, three years ago, we came in with a deficit, and we, we asked the city manager to prepare for us cuts across, you know, then there was like the three different levels of cuts. This is a very different situation this year. This year, we're looking at a whole lot of wants in a very progressive time where there's an appetite to do a lot of investments in a lot of really laudatory areas, including staff salaries, including these, I mean, that's, that's a huge part of the cost driver here, is living wage. And then we're looking at, and it's a time when, and then meanwhile, the economy has produced several million dollars of extra revenue. So, the question to me is, could we have, are there levels of getting most of what we're looking at from these several different major drivers, but maybe not all of them? It would be the flip side of looking at what we were doing when we were trying to handle the deficit last time, which was how do we get to fill the hole by looking at, at reductions across different departments? What could be done with the least pain? Here, is there a way that we could have a lot of what we would want? And it might not be everything, and maybe some of that would have to do with timeline adjustment. Like, we're looking at taking on lots of very progressive programming in one year, all of a sudden, which is very sympathetic, and it's a good thing to want to do. But it's, I'm, you know, I just, that's, that's one of the ways that I, just as one person, I'm gonna be trying to look at it.
But that, but these, it's not sympathetic, because it's things that should've been happening. So, it shouldn't have to be done in one year, because we should've already been doing them. So, we shouldn't have the affordable housing crisis that we have in a wealthy community, that we have, our school system shouldn't have to ask in this wealthy community for a reconfiguration plan for a decade, when we know that tons of parents who have the resources pull their kids out at the two school systems, Fifth and Sixth at Walker, Seventh and Eighth at Buford, that we're discussing. And what we are saying is that we're allowing kids who can't and parents who will sense, will stay within the school system to suffer while we know that there are people pulling their kids out, going to pay fourteen thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars per year. So, this is about just having a different conversation in the community about things that we've allowed to happen that shouldn't have been allowed to happen in, in the first place. And maybe some of those parents who can now pay fourteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars a year will keep their kids in the school system if they buy into the reason this reconfiguration plan is necessary in the first place. And maybe all of our kids get a boost as a result of that, instead of what is, what's happening now. So, I think it's just, you know, we have to reframe the stories that we're telling and, you know, move maybe away from sympathies to, you know, just facts, facts. Why are we here? Should we be here? And what does a community that makes these investments look like long-term? Versus where we are now.
I'd just like to add to what the mayor said, that when I was on the school board in 2010, I was on the redevelopment committee for the housing authority. And the study that was done by Wallace Robertson Todd at that time, made an assessment of all the properties in the housing authority's portfolio, and they all needed to be dramatically rehabilitated and redeveloped within one or two years. And that was now ten years ago. So, there is a lot of truth to what Mayor Walker just said. That doesn't mean that the housing authority doesn't come, have to come to us with a really solid plan. We're not saying that at all. We're gonna be wise stewards of this money, but we need to be prepared to have the money in hand. And, and again, I, I, I'm gonna be adamant about having excellent plans. But, and when you've got one, you go with it, and you make sure you have the resources to fund it when it comes, and it comes down to affordable housing and schools. And again, I, I think infrastructure is critical. I, I, I don't wanna be robbing Peter to pay Paul or making this a zero-sum game.
And likewise, the schools ten years ago looked at the same reconfiguration that they're looking at today.
Yep, I was, exactly, thank you, yes.
So, it sounds like we need to keep our doors open? For every, anything? Just to have the flexibility to make those decisions.
Do you all have questions for?
Yeah, I just wanna recap, you know, make sure, because, you know, we talked about the things that need to, you know, be scenarios that you see when we talk about the CIP. And I think we're pretty clear on that. And I think that we also understand, I think I heard that there is some appetite to consider meals and lodging, and that we will, on meals, lodging, and real estate, provide you with some impact analysis, you know, what that looks like at different, you know, valuations on houses or commercial, but also on, you know, a hotel room or a meal out at different price points. And we will need a venue at some point, if after that consideration, there's a will on council to discuss real estate. And, and so I just, that's the one loose end for me, is, you know, sometime between now and February eleventh, you know, we will have given you much more quickly than that, these scenarios. But then we would need a venue to discuss with you if there's any appetite for considering real estate, so that we can make the appropriate notice by February eleventh.
And if we could also have some discussion about the relative regressiveness and progressiveness of the taxes? I think that's important to understand as well. It's my understanding that, say, lodging is considered to be a progressive tax, because it's usually people that are wealthy are going and staying in a hotel. Meals is not as progressive. Meals are regressive, because a lot of people go out, especially people in shawls will go out to our restaurants. Real estate has typically, in my, my understanding, has been considered to be a regressive tax, I mean, a progressive tax, because more wealthy people own a lot more property. So, is there some way that we could just have some review of that? Because I do think we need to think in terms of how these impact people of different means. And I know we're trying very hard to compensate or mitigate the impacts of real estate tax increases, be it through just assessments or by any other means, on people who have fixed incomes or their incomes certainly are not growing as fast as the value of their property. And that's, that's a serious concern. But I, I, I am, I am interested in, in a discussion about the relative progressiveness or regressiveness of these taxes.
And so, just the real estate, the grant relief. So, we have, Todd had already built some cushion in his budget to expand the, let me see if I can get all the facts, to expand it to three hundred and sixty-five, the thousand?
Well, the, you all increased the, for the CHAP program, you all increased the home value threshold to three hundred and seventy-five thousand last year. What we were talking about was increasing the income threshold for all three programs, CHAP, real estate relief, rest of the sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, that, that one, yeah. So, it...
And I built that into my budget request, which I assume is...
Yeah.
Great, well, thank you, great.
So, that part, and then we were also talking about areas where we should consider one hundred percent tax relief. And so, that's, we're working on that now, trying to figure out what, and I know you sent me an email.
Yeah, that's not built into the...
It's not built in, but that would be an additional. But in terms of talking about, and we're talking about homeowners with income right now between twelve and twenty-five thousand dollars, who are paying up to, what was it last year? Three or so thousand dollars per year in taxes?
Yeah, I mean, potentially.
Yeah, but over, it's a range, yeah.
Yeah, those, they could still be getting a thousand dollars.
Under this current and the expansion, yeah. But that's what we've been going back, back and forth to, trying to explore what, what that would look like.
The challenge is, we, we also know we have a lot of low-income residents who rent in the city, and let's be honest, none of their property owners are gonna fall within those categories. And so, they're gonna pass that on to their renters in most cases. Not all landlords are so gracious at accepting that and not passing it through. And so, I just want us to kind of be aware of that. And there's, that's a lot of people that are on the rental side as well, that feel that pressure.
So, is that, I'm sorry?
Yeah, and I mean, that was a, one of the, you know, small business owners came in today, and I think he had made rounds talking to everyone about his assessment value increases and that he, you know, rents to, you know, low-income households and the impact that it was having, that it was having on him too.
Cause they passed the cost down.
Huh?
They passed the cost down.
Or if they try not, then he, I think in his case, you know, what that looked like for his bottom line. But just thinking from that mindset, if we don't figure out how to, you know, protect and help assist individuals in, that's in that category, we let a lot of people who could pay a lot more off the hook. So, I don't know what the answer to that is, but there has to be a better answer than we are...
I'm gonna bring this up that...
Than we're doing now.
It's, it's not gonna be in time for now, but I'm gonna be asking council once. I, I've been talking to this person, David Shreve, who is an economist, and he's taught, he's come up with different scenarios of how to combine different tax rates, make the real estate tax more progressive. And I'm working with him to get a summary of, of his proposal. The idea would, it would have to be studied, because, and also understood that there are things we can't do because of the Dillon Rule. But it, it, it gets exactly to what Mayor Walker's saying, is that we've gotta figure out a way to really tie this to income level of the person, so that their, the, their impact of real estate taxes is mitigated, based on their income. So, you turn it, we can't do income taxes in cities in Virginia. That is the ultimate progressive tax. But trying to make their real estate tax more progressive is, there's some things that you can manipulate. But, and I, I guess the circuit breaker, I haven't heard anything, whether or not that's gone anywhere in the General Assembly. That was in our package, to have a circuit breaker tax where they, was, where it would be based on income that residents would get a refund in their state taxes. But I haven't heard anything from David Blount yet, whether or not that made it through anywhere.
So, I had a, I had a question, just kind of more so logistics. And it's okay if we can't, but April ninth, we had the final day on which we had to sign everything. I was wondering if, could we change that to April tenth? Just Tuesdays are really, really bad for me, Tuesdays and Thursdays.
So, April tenth won't work for me, or can we do it?
Oh, okay.
As long as it's before the fifteenth.
So, are there any final questions, so we can do public comment?
So, we, we need to, do you know what, like, we're gonna get information from you before we do the advertising? Okay. Cause we need to make a decision on it, all right?
And is there CIP information we can start looking at before March?
Yeah, absolutely, is there proposed CIP?
Yeah, we have it, but can we? Yeah.
I would like to see it with the schools stuff. I wanna just, I wanna see everything, just at least somewhere where we can, cause that wasn't even in there.
No.
So, how are we gonna, how are we going to address that then? If, I know it wasn't in there when it was in front of the planning commission, but...
That's right.
We're, we're saying that we wanna consider it.
That would be a brand-new CIP. I mean, there was no request or proposal, so it's not plugged in, so...
So, we're not gonna, I thought we were gonna try to do the three million this fiscal year? No?
That is one of the scenarios that we said we would prepare, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's all they need, right? Scenarios versus the actual CIP? Maybe we're talking scenarios.
Just remember, right, that, I mean, the CIP is a hundred and, but let's say, a hundred and twenty-five million dollars or so. And, and let's just remember that on the other side, there's a hundred and twenty-five million dollars or roughly, you know? Projects that we said no to already. And so, although it was not submitted as a request, I mean, what you can think of is the schools have another fifty-eight million dollars, right? And so, in theory, it's the same as there having been three hundred and eight million dollars submitted, and we had selected a hundred and twenty-five still.
So, when, what, what are you planning to present to us?
This person here, this guy?
Cause I think we're saying something, and I hear something.
What we're gonna present to you first is three million dollars for schools on the bonded side. And whether we can do that and stay within our ratios and not, I mean, we'll certainly be pushing up against something even further, without impacting anything that was in the proposed CIP that went to the planning commission. That's step one.
Okay.
Step two, I suppose, based on, I can't tell if it's two or more people who are interested in this, but is something like Elliott Streetscape, right? Step three, which is considerably different, because those things were proposed, you know, they're of a amount that you can imagine might be manageable. Programming in any portion of fifty-five million dollars in the remaining four years to the CIP requires some pretty radical realignment of some other projects that I really think need to be part of that discussion in March, because that is where council needs to weigh in about how to prioritize some of those items.
But, so, okay.
And all I was saying is that it's gonna be part of that list on the bottom, even if it's not funded. I just want a place where everything is there, so that we can...
Because eventually, I mean, it could be next year, next budget cycle, we will then have a new five-year CIP, in which case we can program the whole fifty-five million, right?
But we need money before then, based on this timeline.
But, but the three million is what we need now.
But in August, it looks like, from the timeline, we need money by the end of this year to start. Is that not accurate?
Well, before we can go to bed, once the design process is completed, the construction will be funded, which would be a year from now, should we schedule out one, it would be August twenty-one.
Oh, okay.
Just, just remember, and I'm gonna try and create some crazy way of explaining this, and then Chrissy will correct me, I hope. Remember, you already have, before we put these things in there, ten million dollars in debt that you pay every year. And it's not retiring, right? And so, we can tell you when some of that debt retires, but as you add, you're really adding. And so, it's like, you know, you owned ten houses already, and you've decided that you wanna own sixteen, right? Well, if you tell me you want the schools, then it's like wanting to own another, you know, eight houses. And so, because of the scale it is in the CIP, so at some point, you can't buy any more houses.
We're gonna have to sell a house to buy a different house. I just wanna know what those options are. That's what I'm... That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
As long as you're willing to let go of some houses. Thank you.
So I think that's the conversation with, for me, like, for Elliott. That's why I want the information. Like, are there, yes, we want things to look and to be safe, but is it an actual safety risk? Is it perceived risk? What does that 2016, I think that was the year, 2016 report look like? Are those the type of things that we have to, you know, have the hard conversations around? Like, if we, then we can't? Or we can do a portion and not the whole thing? What is absolutely necessary and what can be spread out there? If it can be spread out, is it in this five year time period? If it's after that? How long have other things been on the CIP? Who has been waiting? What does that look like? How's it impacting them, their work that they are doing in the city?
The other thing that we talked about today in there was the signalization. That's on an unfunded list. Improving the signalization citywide.
But if we improve, and I know, and I'm.
I know, it's not the same, it's like, there's a lot of things that.
Yeah, okay.
I have absolutely no doubt. There are great projects that have constituencies and departments that would advocate for them and that council may love, that they're on the unfunded list. You know, there is the matter of how many houses you get to own at any one time.
And I'm sorry for not being clear. I realize there's going to be some trading of houses.
Well, and, and I'm just saying, if you get to, if you make a, you, you inherit a lot of money or you, you hit the jackpot and, or you get a big raise, I want to know how many more houses I can build. And that, to me, is related to the tax increase. The metaphor is good.
All right, so let's open for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak? If you can come to the mic in the middle of the aisle. All right, no one?
No one.
Okay.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
We've left you speechless.
Any final comments? All right, meeting adjourned.
That's shocking.